I'd like to call this January 7th, 2021 organizational work session meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first meeting of the new year. George, can you take the role?
Sure. Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
All present.
Does everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, the first order of business of the new year is to elect the Board of Education President. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Richard Miko.
Second. Oh, sorry, I'm really excited.
Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. I'll turn it over to George.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Congratulations, Richard.
Thank you very much.
You want to meet me?
My two minutes of time is over.
You want to meet me at the podium for the?
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect, here and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Normally would shake hands.
So I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for their support, and I am honored and look forward to meeting another year, obviously full of challenges, but also full of opportunity and full of the opportunity to focus on our students and their academics, their athletics, and their arts. So I'm looking forward to that. Next on our agenda is the election and oath of office for the Board of Education Vice President to a one-year term. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate? I nominate Laura Hausum as Vice President.
Are there any other? Hearing none, Mr. Anagostu.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Congratulations, Laura. You want to meet at the podium? Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Strongsville Board of Education to the best of your ability, and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance and said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your support, and as Rich said, I look forward to continuing this role and continuing to learn and working with everyone in our new year. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is district goals. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence and community engagement. That goes without saying that we need all three of these goals to be successful. Next on our agenda is public comment. I don't see any. Is there anyone from the public who's dying to make a comment? Hearing none. We next move to appointment of liaisons to the committee for one-year terms. We have City Council, Mrs. Bissell and Mrs. Hausum; Strongsville Education Foundation, myself and Mrs. Hausum; Strongsville PTA Council, Mrs. Buckner Soli; Ohio School Boards Association of Legislation, Mrs. Buckner Soli and myself; and Ohio School Boards Association Student Achievement, Mr. Roberts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Mr. Anagostu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. In addition, we have a reaffirmation for the second year of the three-year term of Mrs. Michelle Bissell's appointment to the Polaris Career Center. We also have board committee appointments for one-year terms: Finance Committee, Mrs. Buckner Soli and Mr. Roberts; Policy Committee, Mrs. Bissell and myself; Facilities Committee, Mrs. Buckner Soli and Mrs. Hausum; and Business Advisory Council Committee, Mr. Roberts and Mrs. Hausum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you take the role?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Continuing our agenda, it is our organizational meeting, so we have a lot of routine items that we do at the beginning or the first meeting of every year. One of those is the establishment of 2021 Board of Education meeting dates, which is in Exhibit A. They follow our usual pattern. I will highlight that we realize we should do our retreat every year, and so I'm glad to see that that's on the calendar. We don't wait to schedule that. Roberts Rules of Order will be used in the absence of board policy; the establishment of a service fund for fiscal year 2022; be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that a service fund be established by the Board of Education in the amount of $20,000. Number 15, recommendations by superintendent authorizing the treasurer to reinvest available funds for 2021 in accordance with board policy to pay bills within the adopted appropriation and in 2021. We have legal counsel appointments; be it resolved that the superintendent of schools and his designees be authorized to contact legal counsel as necessary for the successful performance of their duties. Legal counsel is designated in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? I will, for the public's sake, just let everyone know that we choose our legal representation because of their expertise. We have a lot of different lawyers, not because we need or like to jump and use lawyers, but because when it's appropriate, we want to have the best advice that we can get. Any other discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Board of Education meeting minutes: Provided that the Board of Education members receive the minutes of previous meetings at least five or more days in advance of a meeting, authorization is given for the Board to waive reading of the minutes at that meeting. And I will highlight that Dawn does a great job with the minutes, and that allows us to dispense with reading of the minutes at our board meetings, and we thank her. Resolution requesting notification: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the resolution requesting that the Board of Education be notified by the Tax Commissioner of any application for exemption from taxation for any property located within the district. Tax budget for fiscal year '22 is in Exhibit B and will be adopted by this consent calendar. Number 20, investments: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Board authorizes the treasurer to invest a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in commercial paper notes in accordance with Board Policy 6144. I will highlight that we have a very conservative policy. We do want to earn as much interest as we safely can, but we don't risk the taxpayers' money. District credit card limits: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that Board Policy 6423, the annual credit card limits per cardholder or account is approved as listed. OSBA Annual Membership Dues and Subscriptions: Be it resolved by the treasurer that dues are paid for the membership in the Ohio School Boards Association for calendar year 2021 in the amount of $9,342. The cost includes our subscription to the OSBA briefcase and an electronic subscription to school management news for an additional $150 is included. OSBA Legal Assistance Fund: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Board enters into contract with the OSBA for legal assistance fund consultant services for the period of January 1st through December 31st, 2021. Cost is $250. House Bill 9, Ohio Public Records Training Certification: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that to be in compliance with all Ohio public records statutes and the Board of Education requirement, that the Treasurer, George K. Anagostu, be the designee on the behalf of the Board of Education for public records training. I just want to comment that this is a very important requirement, a compliance requirement, but it's one way we assure the public that we're doing things properly and doing things according to law, and I will, I know we all thank George for going to the training. In accordance with Board Policy 0169.3, the Board authorizes the public broadcast of regular board meetings during the calendar year. Number 26, Resolution for Group Health Vision and Dental Insurance: Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that board members may participate at their own expense in group health vision and dental insurance plans provided to the employee of the district. We do have a number 27, Hiring Authority: Be it resolved that the Strongsville Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to employ personnel on a temporary basis between board meetings. This does require a separate vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And I'm happy to announce that we now have come to the treasurer's report, and I turn it over to Mr. Anagostu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have one item under the treasurer's report for your consideration, but also under the organizational meeting, I have the tax budget. As Mr. Miko said, it could be found in Exhibit D. I could briefly go over it. It's five schedules. It's an annual requirement that we must adopt, the Board must adopt and submit to the Cogu County by January 15th. The tax budget begins the budget process for the county for the upcoming fiscal year. What the schedules are made up of, there's five schedules. The first schedule is Division of Taxes Levy, Statement of Fund Activity for the upcoming fiscal year, the district's unvoted general debt obligation, the district's voted debt obligations, and any tax anticipation notes, which the district does not have any tax anticipation notes. The first schedule, the Schedule of Division Taxes Levy, currently of all of our levies, of all the district's levies, the maximum rate authorized is 87.48 mils, but that is when it was originally passed. Based on House Bill 920, the effective rate goes into effect is what people pay on is the effective rate, and based on what House Bill 920 is, is as assessed valuations either go up or down, the effective rate changes, so we're collecting the same level of taxes as it was originally passed. If assessed valuations drop to the point where the effective rate must go up, it can only go up to the maximized authorized voted mils. Currently, as you will see on the schedule, our past rate is 87.48 mils. Our current effective rates for residential are 43.74 mils, and commercial property is 49.26 mils. Schedule 2 is a Statement of Fund Activity for the upcoming fiscal year. The general fund is taken off the forecast, and all the other funds are estimated based on current historical data, and those could be found within the exhibit. Schedule 3 is the district's unvoted debt, which currently there are three issues. Two are paid out of the general fund, one is paid out of the permanent improvement fund. Total outstanding principal at January 1st, 2021 is $4.7 million. Two of the maturities of this obligation, one ends 2035, another ends 2034, and one ends 2023. In total, the annual principal and interest is close to $698,000. And then Schedule 4 is the voted debt, which is the 2013 bond for the middle school and the high school renovation. And then Schedule 5 is tax anticipation notes, which the district does not have any. Any questions on the tax budget? No?
Thank you, George.
With that, under the treasurer's report, one item, and its amended appropriations for fiscal year '21, which can be found in Exhibit E. There are two changes, but within one fund, the Student Wellness Fund 467. The total changes are $44,750, and it's for Diversity Consultant and Career Readiness Program by the ESC, which will be paid out of the student wellness funds that were designated by the state, and there's cash within the fund to do so. So with that, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Superintendent's report, Dr. Reimer.
Thank you, Mr. Miko, and Happy New Year to you and the entire board and our community. In our responsible restart discussion today, a couple of things I want to share with the board and the community. I want to highlight our survey that we had done recently before the break, talk about in addition to our COVID dashboard that I would suggest that we make as we move into the new year, and just give a couple of general updates. So, as I said in my parent update earlier this week, first of all, thank you for all of our staff, parents, and students, our middle school and high school students that completed the survey. We've spent a lot of time going through this, tabulating the results, going through thousands of comments to help guide us as we move forward. So on Monday, I will share all of these slides with everybody, put them on our website so folks have access. So it would be a long meeting if I went through all of the slides and all of the comments. So my goal today is just to kind of give a broad overview, how to interpret the survey, how to look at the survey, and then families can go through their own. So everything is in one slide presentation. So we start with the staff survey, and it'll follow the same pattern throughout. I will tell you how many people responded to the survey and what that response rate was as a comparison to all total people that were invited. So for our staff survey, we had 429 responses. That was a 54% response rate, which is, when you look at survey research, that's really good. And so what we did next is then we broke that down. When you got into the results, we broke the staff survey down to our different employee groups. So as a school district, we have an employee group that we call Administration and Leadership. We have an employee group that's contracted, so these are our nurses, OTs, PTs, other folks that are not employees of the district, but we contract them through the Educational Service Center, et cetera. Opsy, which is our support staff, and SCA, we think of as our teachers. So again, it tells you how many of the 429 respondents, how many of them were in each of those employee groups? What is the total number or group members in that? And so you can see the percentages. So if you take a look at that 54% response rate, you can break that down and see, okay, contracted staff, we didn't have a great response rate from them, but everyone else we had a pretty significant response rate. So when we look at this survey data, we could say this should be a valid and reliable assessment of how our staff are perceiving the work that we've done since it reached such a great percentage of individuals. We then broke it down by building. We asked them what building. So again, you can look at, okay, that's a pretty good even distribution at the elementary level, and it would make sense that it's greater at the middle school and then even greater at the high school. So again, another just kind of demographic check to say, are we getting a good scope of our employees? And then what the survey does, I took all of the objective quantifiable questions and put them together. If you remember the survey, there was a communications, a health and safety, a learning framework. So just kind of going through this one, this was the communications. So at the dark green, we kind of gave you the gist of the question. Hey, is the superintendent effectively communicating? You know, so all responses was a 97% positive response rate. So what this means is this was a Likert scale. So we did strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. So this is a combination. We called this a positive response rate. So it was a combination of strongly agree and agree. So instead of looking at those in four ways, we just said, hey, if you strongly agree and agree, that's a positive response rate. So that's saying 97% thought that, and obviously 3% either disagreed or strongly disagreed. And then the second question was, hey, is your principal or supervisor effectively communicating? 89%. And then underneath, you can see the breakdown by employee group. Again, this helps us to look for outliers, right? To see, are we communicating effectively with all groups or just certain groups as we take a look at this information? Going through to the health and safety, the first one asked about our responsible restart plan, and then the second one asked about, you know, is the district making the health and safety of our staff a priority? And then, you know, I feel safe at work. So you could see the positive response rate percentages there. And again, this is a question where you could say, alright, our administrative and leadership team feels very comfortable in this area. If we look at, you know, the opposite under that, our teachers, not as much. So why is that? And just, you know, we've held, I have superintendent advisory teams that I have. It's a combination of all of these staff members except the contracted staff? So we got into these questions about why that is, why do you think a lower response rate? We kind of picked anything below 75% positive rating. Let's dig into that a little deeper and have some communication. We had some additional health and safety questions, you know, that I feel my colleagues are taking the safety precautions seriously, and I feel informed about active isolations, quarantines, and other COVID-related issues. Again, you can see, you know, for these, the breakdown in total and, you know, by group. And I'll talk a little bit about, you know, some of the themes as we go throughout. As we move on to the next question, this was about what learning framework, when you think about students, what's in the best interest of the academic, social, emotional, and health and safety needs of our students, and how would you rate these? You know, everybody felt in-person learning was the best, and then it went to blended, and then it went to remote learning. And interestingly, when you ask that question from adult perspective, when you look at it at adult perspective, how challenging is it to implement these different learning frameworks? Now, this one, you have to, it's, I flipped it a little bit. We talked about this, and I flipped it a little bit so it read better. So you need to read this as the percentage identifies how challenging this is. So either significantly challenging or challenging. So 45% felt that implementing in-person learning in a pandemic is challenging or significantly challenging. Some people may say, well, why is that? Well, think about how different teaching and learning is when you're six feet apart and you can't, we've talked about that before, right? 69%, 71% thought it was challenging and blended and remote learning specifically, and then helping support students that are quarantined or isolated. You know, 72% of our staff altogether said that's been a challenge in the work there from an adult perspective. We talked about preference, you know, what would be your preference? We asked that question. If all things are the same, I think we did this survey the week of December 10th, somewhere around there, what learning framework do you think we should return to in January 4th? And you could see the progression of our staff. Predominantly wanted to get to remote learning 2.0. Now, when we had our focus groups, for lack of a better term, and talked about this and said, well, you know, we said this is the most challenging learning framework to implement. We said that the best learning framework for our kids is in person. Why are we stating this? And so when you got down into the details of it, and again, this is a focus group, it's not all 400 people that responded, but the idea was there was concern about the surge after the holidays. You know, give us the first week or two in remote, and then the other feedback was stay consistent. Stay consistent with the plan. We understand it's a pandemic, but, you know, as consistent as we can stay, that would be helpful. So I don't want this to look like, wow, 71% of the staff said start remote, you know, did you completely ignore them? No, when you got down into the details of it, are there people in this 71% that would prefer we stay remote learning longer? Absolutely. But, you know, when you take a look at it, it's really about that surge the week or two after break. We also talked about stability and duration. We asked, you know, how would you prefer us to make decisions? Week to week, two-week increments, monthly increments, or quarterly by trimester? The most popular answer here was two-week increments. But again, when we had the conversations, it became less about the duration and more about the consistency in knowing where we're going. You know, so I think the way that we, I saw these survey results before we went on winter break, so the way we outlined our plan of, hey, this is how we're going to operate until further notice, meets with the intent of what was shared in the feedback. And then in terms of, we did some general feedback about, you know, kids being resilient, parents being supportive, staff effectively managing their stress, the culture of the district, and optimistic about the future, and you can see the breakdown there. And we had some additional, you know, how do you feel the district's managing the pandemic? How do you feel the superintendent's managing the pandemic? And so those were the objective questions that were there, so everybody could see, you know, the response rate that we had. And then for each of those, even though they were aligned with that section, for each of those, we said, is there anything else you want to share with us about how we communicate? Is there anything else you want to share with us in terms of health and safety? So thanks to my cold colleagues and our board colleagues, we went through hundreds of comments to look at themes. And so what we said is, hey, go through all of these comments. I think for this one here, there was, you know, 140-plus comments on communication from the staff. Go through these and look for themes and patterns of what you've seen. So I'm not going to read these to you, but when parents get these slides, these are the top five themes. We saw these comments over and over in different variations throughout the survey. So we've got feedback on communication, health and safety, learning framework, lessons learned, praise, suggestions, and questions. So you can kind of see that. So that's the pattern for the survey. Now, when we take a look at the parent survey, same idea, you know, we had over 1,700 parents respond. What we looked at was how many unique homes do we have in the district? We have 1,732 unique homes. So I sent it to a bunch of emails, right? So it could have been two parents in a household that would, but we're not that scientific. But this is, this is the idea that we had, I misspoke, I'm sorry, we had 1,732 responses. I didn't put it there. So you take a look at, that's like 3,400, 3,500 different and distinct homes. We went by the buildings as well, so you could see the response rate by the buildings. And for this one, we asked them, you know, is your student an in-person learner or a virtual learner? And that would take them on different pathways. So I'm not going to go through the results just since it's the same pattern, but what we did is we broke it down by all parents and then pre-K to five parents and six to 12 parents to see, is there a difference? And so this is a good example. If we take a look at communication, the last column says, you know, the teachers have effectively communicated with parents about classroom information. We got a 93% positive rating from elementary parents and a 75% positive rating from our secondary parents. So that's something for us to dig into and say. So that's something for us to dig into and say, we're doing a really good job. How can we, what's the real challenge for us in terms of communication? Where are we missing the mark? Where are we seeing some success? And how do we get better in that area? And then we go through the data, very similar questions, and you can kind of see the positivity rate there. We also broke it down, we had some specific questions just for our virtual learners. So we did the same thing. We asked them what learning platform they were in. We asked them what levels of support that they needed. So you could see that predominantly are, are students in virtual learning. They stated that they, the parents stated that their kids need significant or moderate support to be successful in. And then we, you know, asked them about, hey, is it meeting the needs of your children? So better rate at the elementary level than we're seeing at the secondary level? Again, this is all programs, so this would be SESK and access, Solo 2.0, Lincoln Learning, et cetera. And, you know, we asked them specifically from a, from a parent of a virtual student, how are we managing the pandemic? And then we did the themes for the questions that were there. The next survey that we did is we sent it out to our middle school and high school students. So we had 916 of them respond, that's about a 30% response rate. Broke it down between middle school and high school, so pretty even split in terms of the percentage of students that responded to total group members. Again, asked if they were, you know, virtual or in-person. And asked, you know, safety questions as we talked about there. And again, you can see middle school students rated things a little more positively than our high school students. We asked that question too, about which learning framework best meets your needs. And you can see a very similar pattern. It's interesting that blended is a little higher up there than we saw on the other, other graphs. And then we talked about, you know, what they preferred to be in when they returned from winter break. And so you kind of see a smattering there across the three learning frameworks. Our students are not thinking, do not think we are effectively managing the pandemic as well as our parents and our staff are for some of the reasons that were listed above and in the comments. We also, you know, for the, for the virtual students, you know, you could see there's a little different perception maybe than parents at home. Still, more heavily rated in the moderate and limited versus the significant. We also asked a question, I didn't put it on the graphics here, but who is providing that support? Is it parents? It's predominantly parents that are providing that support at home. And then we had fewer questions for the students, but provided the, the themes from those questions as well. The last part of the survey is, you know, if we take these three surveys and kind of stack them next to each other, what does that look like? So these graphs just show, you know, for the staff and parents, we didn't ask about effective communication with the students. But, you know, when we take a look at effective communication, what was the positivity rating for superintendent? You could see very similar, a little different between staff and parents for the principal. And then the, we didn't ask, you know, obviously, the teacher was not an applicable question for the staff. And then it goes through health and safety. You could see kind of the differences. So, you know, one of the, you could see in this health and safety, our staff rated us lower than our parents did, and our, and our, you know, students were a little more aligned there. Learning framework effectiveness, recommendations, the stability and the timeline of it, and then how we've managed the pandemic. So you could see, you know, as I kind of alluded to, the difference there. So that way, if you just wanted to see, instead of looking through all the different slides, that's there for you. So what I would say in terms of, we've been working on the data, looking at it, you know, using it in our decision-making and our work moving forward. But we also went through all of those, we took the themes of the themes. So as, as we, we took those slides and the feedback, what were some of the things that were prevalent, no matter whether it was staff or parents, or, you know, similar things were mentioned in multiple different areas? So the, the first thing, and I would say it's the most predominant one, is that people want a consistent decision framework. They want to know the game plan. They want to know the, the rules and the guidelines that we're following. And whether they expressed it as frustration that we went away from that, or just, you know, please stick with it moving forward. I would say that was the, the number one piece that was put in there. You know, this one was more of a theme from the staff throughout, but transitional time between switching frameworks. You know, the, they said it's been very challenging to, even though it's going, you know, back to in-person or from in-person to remote, and we've already been in remote, there still is a change of mindset, a change of approach, a preparation for lessons that they, they said clearly, like, if we, if we, if we move back, give us a day. Give us a day to transition to prep, to, to plan, so we can be successful and catch our breath and get ready for that, that new approach. There was, there was a lot of positive feedback in terms of, from a staff perspective and a student perspective and parent perspective, about when we were in blended or remote, the Friday kind of not-traditional-school-schedule day. They liked the opportunity to kind of catch their breath, to get caught up with work, to use that time to collaborate for staff. So in blended and remote, people liked that Fridays were not the traditional schedule. Good communication and transparency from, from me and other administrators in the district came out quite frequently. And then we got a lot of positive feedback on our use of technology. People liked that we went to Google Classroom, that we had a, a platform that allowed for better communication, better structure, better consistency. And people have shared some, a lot of positive feedback on our ability to have virtual meetings now, right? If I, if I'm a parent of a, of a child that needs to have meetings, for whatever that is, whether it's an IP meeting, or just a parent meeting, or conferences, the idea that I don't have to take off work to come to a meeting, I can just, you know, jump online. People have really liked that, and these are things that I don't see will go away in the future. They're just become good practices. Some of the, you know, one of the biggest themes in terms of where we need to either explain better or share better is questions regarding more details with regard to COVID tracing and contact tracing. That came from, we had a lot of discussion from both staff perspective as well as parents. And so the, the challenge that we have, and Jenny, feel free to jump in if there's anything that you would like to add, but the challenge we have is privacy laws, right? And we have to follow those. And so we're trying to balance, what is, what is as much communication that we can give without violating those privacy rules? And so that's something that I know Jenny, over break, has worked on, you know, looking at streamlining our communication, streamlining our quarantine procedures. Because for our principals and Jenny and our administrative team, this is really a full-time job. You know, this is, this is what spends an enormous amount of time doing is the contact tracing. So Jenny, anything you want to add about, you know, we've talked with the advisory teams and other things about, you know, where you're maybe putting some of your energy, or what we just can't share in terms of contact tracing?
Sure. So, you know, as I read through the themes with this, obviously, this is something I deal with every day, so I was interested in what people had to say. And I think the hard part sometimes too is, you know, somebody might be symptomatic, staying home. And then once we know that they're positive, it may be, we might have to trace back to when they were last in school, which could be five days prior, and then two days prior to that, who they had contact with. So sometimes we're contacting parents of kids and saying, okay, you're a direct contact. And it's, it's going to go backwards to, you know, seven days prior. And so I think there's frustration, like, why didn't I know this? You know, so I think we've done a phenomenal job personally, working with Crystal Tackeberry, our nurse, Steve Pritchard, our trainer at the high school and middle school, as soon as we know. I mean, we're doing this in the evening, we're doing this on Sundays, we're doing this at, anytime we find out, we try to, you know, work together to communicate. And our principals have also, I have to give them credit, are calling parents as soon as they know. We don't want kids coming to school the next day knowing that they may have been exposed and quarantined. So I think that's part of it. You know, and obviously, there's a fear, and I understand that, that nobody wants to get this and nobody wants to put their families at, or at risk. And so, you know, I think there is a nervousness of the contact tracing as well. Like, what if I was exposed and they don't tell you that I was with them? You know, so I've encouraged our, our principals that staff can come to them personally and say, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, I was with this person, this person, this person was, do I have a reason to be fearful? And so we can always do that, but we do have to protect the privacy of, of individuals and, and the privacy of our kids. And, you know, teachers are permitted to know, the kids that are under quarantine or in isolation, if they're in their classroom and they have to, you know, provide work, they are entitled to know that. And then, you know, the other piece is the cleaning. You know, again, when you find out that somebody's positive, but it's, they were, you know, in class six days before, you know, how did that get cleaned? You know, so we are doing the best, the very best we can, once we know the information. So I just want to share that.
So that kind of concludes the update I wanted to give on the survey. So any questions or further discussion that we want to have at this time?
If I could, while I was listening to Jenny talk about the contact tracing at our, at next week's meeting or the, the week after, maybe it would be useful to go through a scenario. Because I think some of it isn't, you know, the, the easy part is, is who's infected, who's not. I want names, I want addresses, I want serial numbers. But the other part is, is that we don't, we understand that it's a lot of time. I don't think many of us understand the process and understand, you know, you start with the person, and what are the symptoms, and what are the dates? And then, you know, what is considered a direct contact? What is, you know, a friend of a friend of a friend doesn't count. So maybe at a future meeting, we could just do a scenario. And I think that would help parents and the public in general, A, understand the, the process and how it, it tries to balance not being overly isolating. You know, it would be easy to play Kevin, six degrees of Kevin Bacon, and everybody's isolated because you all, we all know each other. But where is that reasonable balance that we protect ourselves and, and our students as far as isolation, et cetera? So I think that might be a good idea. And it'll help everyone understand the process. And also, it is an inordinate amount of time. And I think it'd be helpful to appreciate that.
And you may have said this, and I may have missed it, but are you going to post this slideshow for parents and staff to read if they're interested?
Yeah, so we're going to put it in the update on Monday, and then we'll post it on the website. So people can have access to it. The second thing that I wanted to share with you is, you know, Jenny completes our COVID dashboard on a nightly basis. That, that dashboard shares, you know, how many active quarantines, active isolations we have. But as I, as we shared in the board, our last board meeting in December, you know, we're looking, as we move forward, I want to move away from, you know, moving to remote 2.0 for the whole district. And I think we can be strategic with that moving forward, whether it be by building or by grade level, based on where the, the risk is higher. So what, what I'm proposing, and just wanted to share with the board before we add this, is we add this to the COVID dashboard. So this would be kind of a slide two, that would be a part of that. And this is kind of breaking it down by building level. And so, as I've shared, I've shared some slides in the past of the data that we track on a, on a weekly basis. But, you know, what data is going to be critical, and this was in my recommendation, but what data is going to be critical as we look at how we're going to operate at the building level? And some of those areas are the areas that, that are selected. I'm going to start with this one, our student absence rate, staff absence rate, teacher fill rate. And we'll talk about the quarantine here in a second. Isolation rate and suspected or documented school spread. So what this chart is sharing, let's talk about student absent rate. So, so first of all, what we're working on is to line up with the, the color coding system in terms of the timing, right? I want to be able to see the data on a Thursday, so I know where we're going into the, into the, into the next week. So this is, this is real data, this is real, real data in terms of where it was on December 18th, looking back from the Friday, December 11th to Thursday, December 17th. So that's our, our week timeframe. And so when you take a look at student absence rate, what you can see all the way in the right-hand corner is I put what would qualify as higher risk. And so as a district, I've looked at the trend data for the, since September, as to where student absences have been. We have never reached 15% yet. So if you remember, you may not, but it was in our original plan that if we had over a 25% absence rate, then that would be cause for concern. We've never even come close to that. And as we've looked at that, how do, how does quarantines and positive COVID cases, where does that relate to student absences? It relates to getting close to 15%. So what, what this is saying, if you look at the chart, we, the green is lower risk. The yellow is moderate risk, and the red, or pinkish, whatever looks on the board, is higher risk. And so each of these is, is broken down into three groups. So I didn't put everything in there, but if you would look at it, 15% or greater is higher risk. So that means zero to seven and a half percent is lower risk, seven and a half to 14.9% is moderate risk. So it just broke it down into three areas. So when you look at this, you could say, you know, we had a average absence rate for the week in preschool, middle school, and high school, below seven and a half percent. You know, that's not great, but in a pandemic, that's, you know, not too bad. Chapman, all the elementary schools were between seven and a half percent to 14.9%. And nobody was over 15%. Looking at the staff absence rate, this is looking at all employees. Support staff, teachers, all employees together. And it's just saying, how many are absent on this weekly basis? What is the average absence rate? We look at it every day. What's the percentage of staff absent on Friday through Thursday? And then we average it out. If it's 10% or higher, so again, if, if absence rate was less than, zero to 5%, it would be green, which Maraski was. If it was between 5 and 9.9, it would be moderate, which you see the three buildings that were in that level. And then if it was above 10%, it would be at a higher risk. This is not a higher risk for COVID spread. This is at a higher risk for us to effectively operate. And the reason we selected this is after the first of the year, we, we said, what is our, what is our subpool as a percentage to our available staff? So right now, after all the dust has settled and Jenny's done more hiring, we are, for teachers, we have 13, we have a ratio of, of 13%. So we have, let's say we have, I'm not even going to try to do the math, because if we have 100 teachers, we'd have 13 subs. You know, so, so multiply that by four, we've got like 52 subs to like the 400 teachers that we have. We have less than that because all those teachers don't need a sub. But that's where we said, okay, 13% is our max. If 13% of our teachers are out, we're maxed out on subs. And that's saying every sub we have is working. We typically average 20%, a 20% ratio. So because of COVID, because of so many full-year jobs that are out there, it's harder to get the subs, so we're at 13%. For our Opsy staff, for our support staff, we're at 14%. So what I'm saying is, once we get above 10%, that's a red flag. That's a red flag for us to say, we have concerns with adequately staffing our buildings. But instead of saying we're going to close the whole district and go to remote like we did between Thanksgiving and winter break, this chart, this dashboard can say, where are we at higher risk in a grade level or a building? How can we maybe go remote for a little bit of time in that grade level or building? Use those subs in other locations to keep other buildings going if we see risk markers in the building across. So staff absences is everybody. Teacher fill rate is now just looking at teachers. It's saying, at what rate? So this is again, why we went to remote over, over the Thanksgiving to winter break there, because we were down in the 60% range. We're saying that if it's 74.9% or lower, that we've got concerns. And we've broken that down as to, you know, what that would be and what would, what would lead to a moderate risk or a higher risk during remote learning. We were good, right? So our fill rate was almost 100% in every building for those that, that needed subs. I'm going to skip to quarantine and go to isolation rate. So this is a, a measure of positive COVID cases. And the reason why I selected isolation rate per 100,000, because it makes it an apples-to-apples comparison. Two students at Chapman is not equal to two students at the high school because the student population, the staff population, it's a larger denominator. So this is the same method, this is the same formula that is used to how the county gets its, you know, number, how the city gets its number. So based on looking at, you know, the data, just so you're aware, like, if one, if one individual at Chapman Elementary School is COVID-positive, their number per 100,000 is like 380. So the idea of, Cameron, are you serious? Like 1,500 is where you're putting that number? But when you make that population smaller, that number skyrockets. But when you make that population smaller, that number skyrockets. So again, this is not just me picking a number. This is looking at the data that we've collected over the past months to say, when can we say absences, student absences, staff absences, isolation rate, quarantine rate? Where is that line where it seems like it, it takes it to a concerning level? And that's been 1500. Again, it's apples to apples comparison. So again, you could see, uh, you know, where the breakdown is between moderate to high to lower risk. And the last one is suspected or documented school spread. Now, I want to qualify, we are tracking all spread, all suspected spread. And as I said in my parent update, we don't have anything that we believe is documented yet, but we suspect it. What I mean by that is, and I used this in a meeting earlier today, uh, with, with a sports team. We have player A that tested positive for COVID. Players B through Z were quarantined. Player B tests positive for COVID, but he also has a family member that tested positive for COVID. So was the pathway through our, our athlete or was the pathway through the family? I don't know, but for transparency purposes, we're saying it's a suspected spread. But what we're also doing, you know, is looking at what is suspected spread in a school-based classroom setting versus what is suspected spread in athletics? So we're, we're looking at that data for this, it's just in the classroom. So as you could see, uh, we've had nobody, so, so zero cases is green, one case is yellow and two or more cases is red. We, we've had zero cases of spread in that week that we looked at, uh, for this measure. Now the only, I have two slides here I started with here. The only difference in here is the quarantine rate per members. So that was something that we used to track, or we still track, um, but used to have some weight in it because part of the reason we went to blended was because of the number of kids that were being quarantined at the middle school and high school. We still are gonna have to quarantine students, we're still gonna have to quarantine staff. I'll talk here briefly in a minute about the new quarantine rules. But the idea being that if people are wearing masks, if they're in a school-based setting, if they're at least three feet apart, um, that they do not have to quarantine. That's something that I, I look at as, what I'm suggesting is we don't need to put that on there because it's not really going to be an impactful decision part or decision-making point. So what I want to share with, with the board, we have per, I want to go back to those COVID risk levels. You know, our first initial plan, um, you know, decision framework was based on those ki, the county code, uh, COVID risk levels, those colors. And we still have in our plan that if it's purple, we go to remote 2.0. That's not changed. But what I want to share is that for red, for red, orange or yellow, that as we've learned more, uh, as we've heard the experts talk, and, and this is coming from the Board of Health as well, even though they're still relying on this, that is a measure of stress on systems. And so when you look at that, that COVID risk level, red is really saying, hey, you're stressing out, you're starting to stress out the hospital system. I can't remember, but I believe of the seven criteria, four of them are hospital-based, if not more. If you take a look at it right now, the last two weeks, we've been red, but we've only hit two indicators. Two indicators is orange, but the reason we're red is because we're high incidence. We have that, that per hundred thousand is over 200. So I think it's time for, in my decision-making, time to evolve and, and moving away from yellow means this, orange means this, red means this. And going to a framework like we're talking about is let's use our data at the building level to make strategic decisions and, and also compile it to district-based decisions. Because those color codes are a measure of, of stressors on hospital systems and, and systems in general. And not a measure on, on our ability to safely operate in schools. And so this is what I'm suggesting we add, uh, as a public dashboard. Wanted to open it up, Mr. Miko, to you and the board for any feedback or suggestions.
Um, I have a question. So we're using this to decide whether we would, uh, how we will operate, what learning framework we were operating, we're trying to target different schools and situations. What combinations of, like we're looking at, you know, SRR, what combinations of these, different criteria and how they are colored will cause a school to close? Or do you have that?
Yeah, so this is, this is a subset of a larger data pool that I look at. And so, you know, these are the, the ones that I didn't include here are the ones that are really consistent by, for the, for every building. So when you take a look at some of the things we consider too, we still consider the county, what's happening around us in the other counties? You know, what is the positivity rate? What is the colors? We still consider those things, um, but they are applied equally to each of the buildings. So in terms of what we're putting publicly, uh, on a dashboard, I, I felt like that would make it too busy. So, but when you look at the data behind this, there are weights that I give to certain things that will take all of these things into consideration and let us know whether a building is at, looking down the column, Sherry, it, it will look at it, it will quantify it and look at, you know, is, is SRR at low risk, uh, low to moderate risk, moderate to high risk or high risk? Once we get to that moderate to high risk, that's something we want to keep an eye on. And if we see that it's in that high risk range, um, then that's something where we would go to remote. So the way the, the kind of system is built is it's not defined by one criteria. So it's not saying, hey, if, if every one of these turns red or you've got, you know, how many are there, five, you know, you've got three red and two yellow or green, that that's gonna necessitate you're gonna go, uh, to remote. It's, it's a weighting of all of these that gives you an overall view. And then, uh, you know, it would be for really the, the two main reasons that we would go to remote, uh, based on all of this put together. Is the, the combination of you look at that staff absence and teacher fill rate together? Like can we adequately staff the buildings and, and keep a high-quality education? And the other part would be the, uh, looking at the student perspective, which is the isolations and the spread. You know, are we seeing isolations go up? Are we seeing spread move? And, and those are the two factors. So even though they're separated, they kind of lump together in a, in a thought process to making that decision. And so, you know, kind of, you know, what would be the, what would be the thought process and communication? You know, our guidance, we, we always still want to give as much notice as, as possible, right? Possible week, a week's notices, we've always talked about it possible. So these are things that, um, you know, that we, if we say, hey, you know, SRR, SRR was, was high, we're kind of watching them, those would be some things that I would give parents a, a heads up on of, you know, hopefully things will improve, but right now we're, we're keeping an eye on SRR and here's looking at, for these grade levels for this building, whatever it may be.
Cameron, are you, I was just by building right now, but if there is a, a spread of isolate, or uptick in isolations or quarantines within particular classes or particular grades, are we drilling down to that far so that it doesn't necessarily have to affect the entire building? It may be just a smaller cohort of, of students?
Yeah, so we would be able to look at, and this was where Jenny would come in to say, you know, this is big picture, right? This is, we've got an issue at SRR, just to keep using them as an example. Then go to Jenny and to say, where is that issue? Is it, and then she can tell me, you know what, Cameron, it's really just a fourth grade issue. I think if we go fourth grade remote, so it, it would be a strategic approach. And we would only go to a building level where we felt like, okay, it's, it's, it's not, it doesn't have any boundaries right now, right? But, but so far up to this point, it has been pretty targeted. You know, Chapman fifth grade got, got hit pretty significantly. You know, building X can, can get hit pretty significantly. At that time, it was quarantines more than isolations, but that would be the idea, so.
Yeah, I think it makes sense from the standpoint of not looking so heavily at the color scale that the state puts out. Um, I'm still interested in the positivity rate and, and those things that are obviously statewide in county and, and local to Strongsville. But, um, I like how this is kind of put together and putting those all together to make the decision.
And I think that, you know, our other hope is just to be, continue to be transparent with our families. You know, you know, you could see kind of what's going on in the building from a week-to-week basis. And hopefully, you know, for those, for those that are visual, it's a nice, it's a nice visual. So unless there's any other feedback, starting next week, I'll put it on the, uh,
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to start using it in addition to the, to the quarantines. I do, I do appreciate the ability to, to use a little more judgment and just to be aware of, of, uh, what the situation is at the, at the various schools. I also think it'll be good, uh, for example, with our, uh, with our substitute, uh, situation. If that would ever become, uh, an issue again, we could be a little more direct and say, you know, instead of the entire district going remote, perhaps we can, uh, keep some of the schools open and shift resources. And I think it just gives us a few more, uh, tools to have that intelligence. I also like the fact that it, um, it highlights the things that are important for us to make those decisions. So I do, I do appreciate that. So we'll start using that, we'll expect to see that next week.
Well, thank you for the feedback. And I just wanted to take a moment to just give a few quick updates. You know, we mentioned, I, I mentioned in the conversation about the new quarantine rules. You know, this, this week has been busy, about every week we, or every day, we get an update of, here's really what the quarantine rules are. And so the Ohio Department of Health sent out the, what hopefully is the final version of the rules, which basically say if you're wearing a mask, uh, and you are distanced and wearing a mask properly above your nose, um, and you are identified as a direct contact, that you no longer have to quarantine, uh, if everybody was wearing their mask. And they qualify today that distancing is beyond three feet. So, uh, because there was a word, they had that word in there, that appropriately distanced. And everybody was saying, well, what does that mean? So as long as they were three feet away, properly wearing the mask, they do not need to quarantine. The other thing that they changed and qualified today, uh, that this not only qualifies for classroom setting, but it qualifies for school buses as well. So that's a good thing. But we are still going to do contact tracing. All the, you know, the, the, the kind of scenario that Jenny's gonna bring to work through, we're still gonna have to do all that. When I met with PTA earlier today, they had a great question. Are we still gonna do the same communication? Yes, we're gonna do the same communication. The difference is gonna be, hey Seth, you were identified as a direct contact, but you don't have to quarantine because all, you were distanced enough and you were wearing a mask. The area where, um, the area where we will still have to quarantine is lunch because there's no mask being worn at lunch. So students that were together at lunch and anything outside of the school day, extracurriculars, clubs, athletics, uh, we will still quarantine there. Jenny, anything else on the new quarantines as we, we'll, we'll put these out next week and share these, uh, once Jenny's working on the, the official communication for that. But anything else you want to mention on that?
I, I guess I just want to stress again, the importance of wearing your mask. Because, you know, the question now is going to be, okay, you were sitting in class, was everybody wearing your mask appropriately? You know, and if we have it below our nose and, you know, no, this wasn't. So it's just gonna be really important that we try to stay apart. You know, we've stressed that a lot and, uh, and wearing every, our masks appropriately in the hallways. You know, whenever you're not eating, you need to have it on.
Just for clarification, is it both people wearing masks appropriately or? I'm sorry, I know everybody asks whether they're masked appropriately. When, when determining the, the contact or, or being a direct contact, is it both people having, not wearing their mask correctly or just one of them? And is it the direct contact still the accumulation of 15 minutes in a 24-hour period?
So it's, it's still the, no, no guidance has changed in terms of the, you know, six feet, 15 minutes. But in terms of if, if I was COVID, if I was identified as COVID positive and you were next to me but not wearing your mask appropriately, you would need to quarantine.
If you were wearing your mask?
It doesn't matter. You both have to be wearing your mask appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
So Cameron, do you see the numbers changing significantly as terms of quarantine?
I see the numbers changing significantly at the middle school and high school. I don't see them changing significantly at the elementary because of lunch. You know, our students eat in the, in the room. So the part that will help out is the bus. So they'll, they'll reduce a little bit, but won't be, won't be a huge change. But middle school and high school will be significant. Because if you take a look at, at the lunchroom, I believe even, even when we're all in person, it's three other kids that sit at the table. So if, at the high school theoretically, if everybody does the right thing, it would be three students that are gonna have to be quarantined based on lunch versus we were averaging 20 to 30, um, before.
Has the Board of Health and the county chimed in on this? I know we were kind of waiting for them to give their approval.
The, uh, the, the state Board of Health has, the county has just started to weigh in. And, and basically what they're saying is their agreement with what the Department of Health is putting out there. So they, they've, uh, they just weighed in for the first time, um, through our communication networks today. And they just, they were the ones that clarified, you know, here's what they mean by the distancing piece of it. So, yeah, but everybody's moving in the same direction. Which leads me to the next part, which is,
I was just gonna comment, I do, I do think it's a, a positive and especially at the middle school and the high school, it'll give us the ability to, go back in person, uh, five days a week. One of the reasons we did the blended at, uh, the middle school and the high school is because of the dynamics there. Like every decision, uh, people may, uh, have their judgment calls to make on it. But the, the change is recognizing the, uh, past six months and what data they've been able to find at schools. And there is not, you know, we, if one person at the high school, uh, would be, uh, come infected, I mean, you would easily see on the dashboard, you'd have one person infected and you'd have 40 people, uh, that are quarantined or in isolation. And our evidence, our, our experience matches, uh, the study that they did in, uh, in Ohio that all of those people that, uh, are quarantined do not end up becoming infected. And so I think it's, you know, at that point, it becomes reasonable to say, uh, in the school setting, if you're following the other, the other mitigating protocols, it's reasonable not to, uh, not to immediately quarantine 30 kids because of the old rules. So I do think it's gonna be really helpful at the middle school and the high school to allow us to return to in-person learning and ultimately to do it safely and to do it reasonably. But as Jenny mentioned, um, if you're, you know, if we grow lax on everything else, it doesn't matter. We're gonna have the same problem where one infection, suddenly, uh, you know, we have to quarantine too many kids and then it becomes pragmatically difficult to maintain education. So I'm excited about it.
Uh, the other update that I just wanted to share is in terms of the vaccine. So the vaccine, uh, is now we're hearing should be available for schools. School employees are 1B, they're in phase 1A right now. So what we heard today is that by February 1st, we should start to see some information for schools. So one thing I've done already is we were, we had to fill out a survey for the Department of Health saying how many employees. And when you take a look at what qualifies is they say anybody would be eligible for the vaccine if they are integral in the operations of the school district. Inclusive of substitutes, contracted staff, uh, hired staff, et cetera. So we've shared, here's how many staff we have, um, how it's gonna work. The Chicago County Board of Health is still working on those details as to how this will work in terms of distribution to staff. And then the other thing that we need to do is you've heard, uh, they're prioritizing districts that are going to commit to blended or in-person starting March 1st. Well, we're already moving in that direction, you know, as of Monday, we'll be there. And so, you know, I've got to read through the fine print of all of that, but, uh, that came out today and I'll take a look at that. You know, on the survey, one of the most popular themes was what, what are we doing with the vaccine? And so one of the parts that I want to clarify is that, you know, one of the questions I get is, well, can you require every employee to get it? No, I can't, I, at this, based on everything that's out there and any other medical, you know, I can't force, uh, everybody to get it. And I used the example earlier today, like we're seeing, you know, nursing home facilities. They're, they're seeing lower percentages of people that are, are taking the vaccine in terms of workers. But we will, uh, move forward, we'll do everything we can to get the vaccine to our employees and, and take care of that. So nothing right now, but, uh, you know, they're starting to get out the details to us and hopefully if we stay on track, February 1st, we'll be moving forward with, uh, offering the vaccine to, uh, our employees.
The, during the press conference, they talked about wanting to know if we have a partner. Do we have a partner?
You know, on the, our partner will really, most likely be, uh, the Board of Health. On the survey, I put that we don't have one specifically right now. They said they just wanted to know so they could help and, and get us one. So, you know, that's something that, you know, we, we use a variety. So, you know, that's something that, you know, we use a variety of partners, whether it be for our biometric screenings, or it's just, we don't know who's going to get the vaccine, how it's going to be distributed, so there's nothing specific right now, but through the Board of Health, I know they'll be, they've been a great help so far, so they'll continue to be. The last update, and it's more just kind of an informational, you know, we're excited that our Chromebooks are in, we finally got an order in. Dave and his team have done a great job of getting everything ready to try and help speed up that process. Dave sent out a communication today that freshmen, right? Freshmen can come to the high school media center tomorrow, anytime between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. I'm sure you'll have a rush at 8:00 AM for our freshmen to be there, Dave. But come to the high school media center, they need their student ID, they need their Chromebook or loaner Chromebook, whatever they had, their charger, and bring that to the media center tomorrow, and they'll get their new Chromebook, they'll get their brand-new Chromebook, and then that helps us get ahead of the game so we can get those Chromebooks cleaned, looked at, ready to go, and back to the elementary, the first and second-grade classrooms next week. If students don't bring them in, they have a plan for the following week to recollect those, but it would be a great assistance if anybody's around who can come to the media center anytime during 8:00 to 4:00 tomorrow with the items mentioned, that would help us get going on them. So appreciate Dave and his team doing all that work. And with that, that concludes my item on responsible restart, unless there's any further questions or topics you'd like me to address.
Any questions?
All right, with that, we do have a couple curriculum updates. We do have, item one is revision to the fund and cost of Ohio online learning, be it resolved upon my recommendation, that we revise the June 25, 2020 agenda, stated there, that it be used for an additional cost at the per-student course rate of approximately $225 for the second semester of the 2020-21 school year. And number two, ad mentum solutions, be it resolved upon my recommendation, that the district pays for students to participate in ad mentum solutions. Secondary online curriculum at the approximate cost of $250 per student per month for the 2020-21 school year. Any questions on curriculum?
Do we have a guesstimate on numbers?
Aaron, do we have a idea of how many students are still in these programs?
About half of them are last semester. 250-ish high school.
250 divided by two, or 250 is half?
Let's say 200. 200 high schools, secondary.
Thank you.
And then that takes us to our human resource report, Jenny?
Thank you. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under C1, we have a settlement agreement, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the terms of a settlement agreement, copies of which were previously distributed to the board by the superintendent for a Cuyahoga County Common Pleas Court case effective upon roll call vote of the board, and to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to enter into that agreement with the complainant. So this does require a separate vote.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any further discussion? Hearing none, George.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Under C2, I have the retirement of a certificated staff member. This will be effective at the last day of school of May 28th. Ms. Val Atkins is officially retiring, so we'll celebrate our retirees at a future board meeting. Under C3, appointment of an administrative substitute, appointment of a certificated substitute. Under C4, change in status for certificated supplemental contracts prorated. Under C5, changes in full-time equivalence for certificated supplemental contracts prorated. And that concludes my report.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point means that all items with an asterix are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion?
George, you're up.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Board policies, we have on first reading, a number of policies that we reviewed at our last policy committee meeting. Copies have been distributed to the rest of the board members. If there are any questions or concerns, you have two more readings to bring them up. Thirty-two, Board of Education other, first on other is board member professional development expenses, reimbursable expenses, be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education approves Michelle Bissell and Laura Hausum's reimbursable expenses as outlined in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion?
I just want to compliment once again my fellow board members. You've all taken your responsibilities with serious diligence, and it's good that everybody continues to get educated. And I'm sure the Ohio School Board's convention was as exciting as it could possibly be.
Hearing no other discussion, Mr. Ondingastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Does anybody have any other others?
I have one quick one. Just an announcement to parents who may have children birthed through age, or through kindergarten. If you're interested in early childhood PTA that's run through the city, please check out their website at www.sescpta.org, or their Facebook page, and you can find, I participate myself, I have one more year, and I'm very sad that I only have one more year. But they do awesome get-togethers under normal circumstances and events and things that really can bring you together so that when your kids go to school, you already have a network of parents to support you. So, thank you.
Mr. Miko? That reminds me, we have our kindergarten informational meeting on Wednesday, January 13th at 5:30 PM. It's a virtual meeting, and it could be found on our website, SCS TV, where we live-stream everything, so the board meetings, every other, the community conversations. So if you have an incoming kindergartner, please join us. Erin's going to do her traditional presentation, we'll answer questions, and registration for full-day kindergarten will start the very next morning. Thank you for the reminder, Michelle.
I have, I have two others. First, I wanted to thank Mrs. Kulsik for joining us, and I was going to congratulate Mr. Schoenhut and Mr. Short on their re-appointment or reelection by their fellow councilman as president and president pro tem for city council. And I did, I forgot to do this sooner, so I apologize, but in addition to our committees and our liaisons, I do want to publicly make sure everyone knows that we have a diversity council. It is a superintendent's committee, but if we put things to voice, it gives it importance. And so we have our steering committee, which is a superintendent's committee, and Sherry and Laura are on the, are the board liaisons or board members for the steering committee. And then we also have the full diversity council, and we only allow two people, two board members to maintain rules as far as public meetings, but we rotate that, and Sherry takes the lead on the larger council, but we all take opportunities to attend that. And it's important work that we're doing, so I did want to make sure that the public knows we have those committees and that the board has representation on it, but they are, they are superintendent committees. Any last-minute others? Hearing none, meeting notification, a special Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, January 14th at 6:30 PM in the meeting room of the administration building, and the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled to be held Thursday, January 21st, 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the administration building. We do have need for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee, to prepare for and review negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms or conditions of their employment, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Take their own.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries, and we will enter into executive session at 8:25. We have no anticipation of further business. Thank you for your attention, Happy New Year, and let's have an exciting and great second half of the school year. Thank you.